Show at six o'clock this Tuesday evening, January 21st, and time for a regular meeting of the Oak Harbor City Council to come to order. We kick off every city council meeting with a invocation followed by a pledge of allegiance. And this evening, giving our invocation is Pastor Matt Oliver from Church of Christ.
Gracious God, Lord, we thank you for life. We thank you for this group of people that gets to meet here tonight and talk about various issues going on with the city, going on in people's lives. Father, I pray that you would be a part of this meeting. I pray that you would lead this city. God, I thank you for the opportunity to even be able to pray in a setting like this. I pray that this city would be a light in a very dark world. I pray that when people came and visited Oak Harbor that you would be seen, that you would be known in this place, God. I pray for the leadership, Father, each individual, and I pray that you would be active in their lives. God, for this meeting, I pray for wisdom and discernment as decisions are made, people are honored. God, I pray that you'd be in the center of it, Father. Thank you for this time. It's in Jesus we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Matt Oliver. Please join me in the pledge.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First up, under honors and recognition, we have a recognition which is a Caught in the Act Award given by the Youth Commission. And our own city council representative that's on that Oak Harbor Youth Commission is Council Member Tara Heisen. Councilmember Heisen.
Thank you, Mayor. We have several members of our Youth Commission present here tonight to present our second ever Caught in the Act Award. And our co-chairs, Ron Lawler and Rainette Wood, are here. And she'll probably introduce a little bit about what the award means and why we give it out. But we are overly excited about this one tonight because we actually chose the recipient months ago, but we've been waiting for her mom to come home from deployment to actually present her with the award. So we're really, really happy that her family could be here tonight. And without further ado, Ray, if you'd like to give the intro?
Good evening, Mayor Dudley, members of the city council. Our Caught in the Act Award recognizes and celebrates positive contributions that youth teens make to our community. Their contributions can be an act of kindness, helping a neighbor to build a shed, or stopping the harassment of a peer. Any member of our Oak Harbor community is welcome to submit a nomination form to our commission. The nomination form can be found at oakharbor.org and should be submitted to Tara Heisen. To celebrate and commend tonight's recipient for her actions, we have a certificate and gift that consists of donations from OHYC members and Oak Bowl. It is my pleasure to introduce you to Melissa Panfield, a ninth grader at Oak Harbor High School, and her nominator, School Resource Officer Dennis Dickinson. Please come to the podium. Can we give her a round of applause?
There you go. You're welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Dudley and the council, everyone here. This is a pretty unique chance to give out this Caught in the Act. How this began is sometimes I take over the lunch stuff and help out with the staff at the high school. And I was out in the courtyard one day, and occasionally we hear the kids, students running, screaming around, doing their thing. Well, caught my attention is Melissa comes running out of the sub. What really caught my attention, she didn't have her shoes on. So I knew something was up, something good was going. And she comes up to me, and she has this wallet that she had found. And we weren't sure at the time it was a student or one of the staff members. But she turned it in all happy, wanted to make sure everything was there. And so I took it from her. And from that, I went to the principal, and he has these little coins that he gives out for similar stuff. So she got a coin, and then I ended up doing the Caught in the Act Award through the commission. And that's why we're here tonight. I mean, Melissa was very excited about it, and every right so. We have tremendous students at the schools that would step up and do what she did. And unfortunately, we don't have eyes everywhere to see the acts that happen all the time. But again, this is Melissa's night, and she was caught in the act by the police. Right?
No, thank you. And Melissa, let me say, thank you. We know we live in a great community, but you make it better. And so you're a great example to how everyone should be on a daily basis and doing the right thing. So thank you for your actions and example. Thank you. Well, city council works off an agenda, and we've got a draft agenda in front of you. Any changes to tonight's agenda? If not, do we have an approval of tonight's agenda?
Still moved.
Yeah, we have a motion from Councilmember Heisen, second by Councilmember Campbell to approve tonight's draft agenda. Any further discussions? All those in favor of approving tonight's agenda signify by saying aye. Those opposed? We have an agenda. And next up is citizens' comment period. Anyone wishing to address the city council on matters within the jurisdiction of the city and are not on the agenda may do so now. Other agenda items, when they come up, we're going to be turning to public for public comment at that time. But you may speak to the consent agenda items. Any suggestions may be referred to staff in the council meeting. And we're going to ask the -- step up to the podium, state your name, and you have three minutes. Anyone wishing to address the city council at this time can do so. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close that public comment period, turn to the city council, and see what the city council wishes to do with the consent agenda items. Councilmember Heisen.
I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Heisen, second from Councilmember Sevillas, to approve the consent agenda items as presented. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of those consent agenda items signify by saying aye. Those opposed? Those consent agenda items are approved. Next up is staff. Mayor and council comments, starting off with our city administrator, Dr. Court.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Just a couple of items. A reminder about tomorrow's meetings, that is plural. We have the 2:30 workshop set aside to hear the exit conference from the state auditor's office. They will be reporting what I believe will be very good news from our 2012 audit. And we also, then I will roll from that right into our three o'clock regular workshop meeting. And we have a fairly full agenda with a number of items in the way of briefing and upcoming council meetings. And my other comment is, at the last council meeting, I was very pleased to introduce you to our interim city clerk, Anna Thompson. I am happy to now say that she has lost the interim part of her title, and she is now our city clerk. So congratulations to Anna.
That should do it. Thank you.
Okay. From the mayor's desk, all I would have to say is, go Seahawks. And turning to the council, starting with Mayor Protim, Danny Peggel.
I don't have anything, Mr. Mayor. Go Seahawks.
Go Seahawks, that's right. Councilmember Campbell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to be a little bit different. I wish baseball season would get started next week.
Go Seahawks. Okay. Councilmember Romford.
Welcome, Anna, again. Glad you lost the first part of your title. We're looking forward to working with you for several years. Thank you.
Councilmember Muns.
Thank you, Mayor. Looking forward to the AWC City Action Conference. They renamed it because this year they want to be more visible in Olympia with their legislature. And they'll actually have a rally in front of the Capitol Building, which usually other groups do, to show that we are a force and please listen and we're interested. And so I think this ought to be a good conference, even though it's a short session. And go Seahawks.
Okay. Councilmember Heisen.
Thank you, Mayor. I live in a household of Bronco fans, so Super Bowl Sunday's going to be real interesting at my house. But either way, we'll be happy, so it'll be good. I wanted to thank the members of the community who stepped forward and donated some prizes for our Caught in the Act recipient. It's an award that wasn't originally planned to come with prizes, but each time we've given it out, we've had people step up and offer, which is a very sweet thing. We appreciate it. And I think that's all I've got.
And go Seahawks.
And go Seahawks.
Councilmember Sevillas.
Go Hawks.
Anything else? Okay. Next up on our agenda, we'll be bringing forward our city engineer, Mr. Joe Stowell, on a possible resolution 1405 related to the Navy participation in the wastewater treatment plant. Mr. Stowell.
Mayor, council members, thank you for having me here tonight. Topic's kind of self-explanatory, but what we're here today for is to seek council's direction regarding the Navy participation in the wastewater treatment plant. I think it's always good to kind of start out, you know, for people that are just in the Navy set or just visiting us for the first time as to why we're here. And I thought I'd just take an opportunity to talk about what kind of system we currently have. The city currently operates two treatment plants. And they're located in the city. One is an RBC plant that's located down by Windjammer Park. We use all the city's affluent sewage goes to that point, and then it's pumped through a force main, which is the red line on the map there, up to a high point on the seaplane base, and then it gravities down to the lagoons that are out on the seaplane base itself. Everything goes through the lagoons and then goes through a discharge out into Crescent So our permit through the state requires that once we reach 85% of capacity, and that's either flow or loading, that we have to do some planning. And that's what we've done. And that gets incorporated into our permit to operate these plants. The first deadline is June 30th, 2013. That was to have submitted the facilities plan. That's been done. It's been approved. It was approved on November 18th. The next step is December 31st, 2014, to have plans submitted, and then an operational plant by the end of 2017. So we've, you know, obviously, we've been working with the Navy for quite some time. Most notably, the one piece of paper that I could find dates back to October of 2010. That was, to me, that's as far on the paperwork that I could go back and track that that's our first conversation. It's the very first meeting that's listed in our facilities plan, is part of our facility planning effort. But I've looked back further, and I can date back to about 2007 where we were looking at different -- we had an ad hoc committee looking for potential sewer treatment plant locations. And I have to imagine if we were looking at putting this originally where the lagoons are, that we were having conversations with the Navy. So between then and March, we had a number of meetings in different forms. But the next key date really is March 7th, which is when we sent a letter to the Navy asking for a commitment from them to be part of the treatment plant. And we requested that they provide us that commitment by July 1st. That was also reiterated, I believe, when some contingent went back to DC and met with Navy staff back there. So we've had several meetings with the Navy. Oddly enough, we had a kickoff meeting on July 1st with the Navy's consultant team. And that was kind of their, that was the start of their looking into, does this make technical sense for the Navy? And we've had a number, these are the highlighted dates, we've had numerous meetings in between, but I thought I'd just list a few of them. And the most recent meaningful meeting that I've had with the Navy was on December 11th, where we met with Navy staff, and they detailed several items from the Navy's perspective. And this was kind of one of those aha moments for us, at least for me. Most notably, the key concerns that I came out of that meeting with is first and foremost, schedule. This was handed out a couple days after the meeting. It's attached in the packet. But there's some real interesting dates in here. This was provided to us from the Navy. This is the Navy's schedule that they gave us, is that this JNA, it's a justification and authorization. They need to go through this step before they can even say that it's worth it for them. That's where they make their business case and say that we can move forward with this. And according to their schedule, that date's set for July 14th of 2014. We wouldn't, according to their schedule, we wouldn't have a signed agreement with them until March of 2015. And there's some funny little things. This is according to their schedule. One of the items in here is negotiations. They only put down a week for negotiations. We had a particular project sometime ago that I believe negotiations took seven years. So there's, I don't know, there's, you know, bookends at both ends of this. An important date to remember in here is we have to have plans submitted by our permit regulations by December 31st of 2014. So you can see, that's ahead of when we would have any commitment from the Navy. So the other key concern that I have, and I won't weeds on this one, but in short form, we came up with a cost sharing of 21%. The Navy's connection charge would be 20% of the cost of the treatment plant. When their consultant looked at it, they said, well, geez, that should only be 9.3. And that's one item of many that came out. If we were to adhere to all of those, we'd be subsidizing the connection of the Navy. So there's, it's kind of bookends, I guess. And at that, and several occasions, the Navy's expressed that they don't have the bucket of money to contribute towards this right now. So they've asked if we would finance those connection charges included in rates. And there's, we've talked about that at the workshops, all the implications of bonding for 30 years but only being able to contract with the Navy for 10. It's a complication that we really, I don't know that we want to take on. So we responded by sending the Navy a letter on the 19th, and that kind of laid out our perspective of fair and reasonable connection charges. It dated back pretty much the same thing as we sent them in March. We expect payment on a regular basis, based on their portion, as we move forward through construction. So if we get, spend a million dollars on construction, they would pay their 21% of that as each of the bills comes through. It limits the city's responsibility. One of the things that came out of the report that they, from CDM that I've seen and some conversations we've had with the Navy is they expected some help in dismantling the lagoons. And that's not in our contract with them. Our contract is to leave them an operational treatment plant. So that was kind of an interesting one that came out. And then facility ownership, one of the comments that came out of the report from CDM that I, the 50% report at least, is that if they pay towards this plant, they intend to retain that ownership. So if they were to leave, we'd owe them back. And then the other part that the letter, and I addressed all these by setting a deadline, you know, by addressing each one of these. I gave them a connection charge. We set the payments. We said we're not going to participate in abandoning the lagoons. We'll give you an operational plant when we leave. We said that we're going to own the facilities, and ultimately, what we gave them was a deadline of yesterday. So why is this such a big deal? Why is this so urgent? Well, you know, I've already gone over the issues with our permit. If we don't have an operational plant by end of 2017, we risk a moratorium on construction, on sewer connections. There's a whole host of other reasons. That's probably the easiest one to talk about. Inflation, for every six months a year that we wait, the price goes up. And we're dealing with a big-ticket item. So, and then the last one is, is the existing facilities are in need of repair. And when I was going through, doing, putting together this presentation, I found some old slides. I thought it'd be, it's always fun to kind of go back to show pictures that this really happens. This is just outside the existing treatment plant. We had the force main break. Alls it took was a little break like this, and the whole force main, which is our only source to send water over, sewage over to the lagoons, it failed. Our guys had to come out, and they put in some temporary pumps, and all of this piping clips together. It's still out in the yard up at Public Works, should it ever happen again. But the point is, you got to get out there and quick and assemble it all. And this all was when the outfall into Oak Harbor Bay was still operational, which it isn't anymore. So the other part of this is the lagoons. We've talked about that before, but you know, the Navy breached the levee there, and now this whole area around is Saltwater Marsh. Our lagoon's treatment plant is right there in the middle. When you get a high-water event, the road to access the plant, you have to drive through water to get to it. And when you look at the outside, you got waves lapping against the side, and you can see from where the lumber is there, what kind of an issue we could have. If you get a king tide and a south wind, it could be an issue. It's a pretty real issue for us. So what I've tried to do is, what are the options? What do we have that we can do? As an engineer, I try to frame things up, right? What are the bookends, right? So the first option is, the Navy comes forward and says, you know what? We get it. We're going to sign this agreement with you guys. We see that what you've provided is fair and reasonable, and we're going to sign on the dotted line. That means, you know, there's the economy of scale. For our customers would be a little bit lower. The capacity of the treatment plant would stay high, but that capacity relates also to the size of it, so it'd be the larger footprint. The risk would be low because we've got a signed agreement, right? And we have a path forward. And the total cost, because you're building a larger plant, would be larger. The second one is, okay, well, the Navy doesn't quite know what to do yet, and, but, so we're going to build a larger plant and see what happens. At that point, we're left with, now we have all the outlay with no guarantee. So presuming we can, it takes us that seven years to come to an agreement. In the meantime, our ratepayers are paying for that additional cost. The capacity remains high, so maybe you get a longer life treatment plant instead of lasting until 2060, maybe it's 2075 or whatever that number is. But the risk is really high because we're taking all that on ourselves. And the total cost remains the same, but without the Navy's help. The last option is, okay, well, you know, the Navy's can't participate right now, so we're going to go ahead and just build a smaller facility. The rates fall kind of in between what it would be for with Navy or without Navy in the larger plant. The capacity is lower, which means the footprint's smaller, so there's a little bit of benefit there considering where we want to put the plant. The risk is lower because now we're in the driver's seat all the way through, and the total cost is that for a smaller plant. So pretty quickly, I don't care for option too much at all. And to be honest, it's high risk. It's high risk for the city. It's high risk for our ratepayers. It's an unknown path. We've been working with the Navy, and it's not, it's just the path that they have to follow. They're working their hardest to try and meet our schedule, and it's just they have to meet these federal FAR regulations that, that's what that whole schedule was that I showed earlier. That's all the steps they have to go through to get something approved. So it's just a factor of things that they can't meet our schedule, and the risk is high. I just don't think that's the best route for us. So that leaves us with the other two, either one or three. Well, we received a response from the Navy on Friday, and I think, I believe that was distributed around the council. And I believe it's included in the packet online now, if I read the email correctly. I'll just summarize it. The letter said that they can't provide a firm commitment by the date we requested. It's just, their schedule doesn't fit ours, and that they're not able to commit to the payments. And they said $22.6 million, but it's a different number than that. But just say they can't, they don't have the funding for it at this point. And they requested that we amortize that connection charge over some duration of time. And, but the key things the letter didn't address is it didn't address any effort to expedite the schedule. It didn't address it at all. And it didn't address any of the concerns with the connection fee methodology that we came up with, that percentage and the comments that we made. Didn't even touch on it. So with that, I go back to, as staff and talking with others here, I believe that option three is the best for the city. It's best for our ratepayers. And with that, I have the resolution 1405, which allows staff to continue with design of a treatment plant that does not include Navy flows, and that allows us to move forward with that on so we can meet our schedule, meet our permit requirements.
Was that given out? Everybody get copies of that?
Yes.
Okay. Make sure.
That's all I have.
Okay. At this time, we'll turn to the public, and if anyone wishes to publicly comment regarding this agenda, Bill, this possible adoption of this resolution, can do so now. We're not, seeing none, we'll bring back our city engineer. Turn to the council, starting with Councilmember Heisen.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I certainly am not looking forward to going it alone. I had hoped that we'd be able to come to some sort of agreement. I honestly don't think we have much of a choice. I mean, like you said, these are our options, and then one by one, those eliminated for various reasons. And thank you for reiterating the fact that it's not, that the Navy is being uncooperative. They just have a lot of red tape that they need to wade through. And unfortunately, we are feeling a real sense of urgency on our part that they're just not able to comply with. So, I mean, it's not even really a decision. It's just the option that we're left with. So I'll support the resolution that we just go ahead and kind of rework the numbers and go it alone. I wish we didn't have to, but, you know, we'll cross that bridge when we get to it, I suppose. Thanks for the info.
Councilmember Romford.
Thank you, Mayor Dudley. Now, the mayor, the council, and all the department heads who are involved in this made a sincere effort to conclude, include the Navy in our wastewater treatment plans. I've been a participant in all of these meetings, as most of you have. And the conclusion that I have come to is that sometimes it's just better to be friends than to be business partners. The Navy and the city's wastewater treatment plant potential just isn't going to work, so we'll just have to be friends and partners on other projects. Perhaps in the future, they could come back. We would have the plant in operation or moving forward. We could always take a look at how much it will cost to do an addition, if it's even possible at that time. It certainly will be more expensive. Thank you.
Mayor Protim, Peggel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm still thinking that it could be possible for the Navy to participate in this project. However, the time has come that the city has to move on, choosing the option three. In choosing the option three, which is on the picture there, the city will proceed with the smaller facility, with the small, limited footprint. Now, in choosing option three, will there be allowance for expansion in case the Navy participate on a later date? participate on a later date?
As of right now, that was not my intent to do that.
So the design will be made in a smaller facility?
That's correct.
Thinking about how, we still support the Navy and how can we show, show the leadership in the Pentagon that the city is working in good faith to support the Navy. I'm hoping that we can make an allowance for option three for later expansion for the Navy to participate on a later date. Will that be possible for the, for the design phase?
You know, as, as we move into the design phase, I'll, I'll definitely work with Corolo to see if there's a way to do that. And, and just to, you know, just to remind you, we're working on other projects with them right now, like the North Booster and Transmission Main. That's another project that we're working on with them cooperatively and we've already passed, I believe we've already passed the J and A portion of that and we're moving on to the next step. So, you know, we're, we're working with them on multiple fronts to, to help make it be successful for both of us.
So after this meeting, if we decide an option three, the city will have only time for the design phase to, to meet the deadline of December 31st of this year. Is that right?
Right now, the, the schedule, I believe, even to get to the, the 2017 deadline is, is a tight schedule.
Very tight. Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Campbell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What is, what is the plan or thoughts on, let's say that we get down close to opening this up and the Navy says, oh, we finally got agreement by everybody, we want to. Are we going to tell them then that, well, you know, it's going to cost you a lot more money because you didn't participate the first time around? Are we going to be in the design phase, design the facility with the option for them coming along later in the plan? Or are we just going to say it's going to cost you guys $15 million more to hook up?
And I really believe that.
One last one. Navy participation in this is Mailer Point? The housing down on Regatta and the base?
It's, it's all the housing on the seaplane base.
Okay, what about the stuff on Regatta?
That too.
Okay. Has there been any conversations with the Navy about the cost to them of rerouting all that stuff to the, to the, to the lagoon if they have to reroute it?
That's currently where it goes. It actually, as I understand it, it doesn't come into the city system until on the far side, on the, on the southeast side of the, that housing along Regatta.
So, so all of them go to the lagoon?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you. I still need to hear your plan.
I'm sorry, refreshing my memory on the question.
What are we going to do when we get about 75% done and they say, oh, let's, we want to join you?
Well, you know, I think that's one of those bridges we'll have to cross when we get there. Should they come in? Well, it all depends on when they come back, right? So if they come in and in six months, that's a lot different than they come back in 10 years.
Yeah.
Right? So in six months, we'll have to take that into account and, and see if there's a way we can incorporate it. And we'd have to come back to council for your approval to make that design change and see what would happen from there. If it's 10 years from now, it could be that there's changes in technology that allow for us to incorporate them in. I, I really can't say until, until we get there.
Okay. Thank you.
And I'd point out the fact that, you know, that's why it was so important for us to, you know, ask them back in March of last year for the answer, the decision, you know, come July 1 of last year.
Councilman Muns.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Stowell, don't we need to order the bio membranes pretty soon because we need a certain size and then the responsibility goes with the membrane company and the contractor, if I'm not mistaken?
That's, that's a very good point. Right now, design is on hold pending this decision from the Navy or our decision on how the Navy participates. As soon as I have an answer, I can, I can get moving with that step, which is procuring the membranes and UV protection.
Okay. You know, like, like you have mentioned, we're doing a lot of projects with the Navy. We'll do a lot in the future. This doesn't mean that we're not friends or we're not cooperating, but we've got to move on. It's too important to the city. The plant down at the beach is on its last legs or last breath almost. We just, we just have to move on and, and just see. And they, I believe they understand that and it's just, you know, we agree to disagree and timing's just off at this, at this point. I would like to see the city, whether it be the staff, council, whatever, it was suggested that we issue a joint press release with the Navy. I think that's the only fair thing because both sides have been working so hard on it and I firmly believe that we need to do this joint press release. So however that is done, I would like to enter that in. Thank you, Mayor. That's all I have.
Councilmember Sevedius.
Thank you, Mayor. There's a number mentioned in the letter from Captain Ortier, 22.6, that you said, I forget how you phrased it, but you said it's not exactly that.
It's not, I don't believe that's the complete story if you, if you go through.
The reason I ask is we sent them on 22.6 assessment of project status and it lists three totals totaling 22.6 that we're asking for.
The, the first one that's dealing specifically with the treatment plant is 15.1. The others relate to sharing with the outfall and construction of a new force main or improvements that would be necessary for the seaplane base to connect to our collection system. So the treatment plant is just, it's, it's the one part of it is about 15 million.
Okay, so they wouldn't be expected up to front those other costs?
You know, the way I see it as being done in phases, the way I proposed it, or at least I was attempting to propose it, is in a way that as we received bills from, say, our contractor, that would get, we'd send something to the Navy to get reimbursed based on that percentage of their share or their connection charge. And then I imagine, the way I pictured this in my head is that our plant would be online in 2017, but it would take them a couple of years to get their connection tied in because I imagine it's going to take some time to go through the design and permitting of the force main that's going to be necessary to have them connect. So I, I imagine this spread out all the way to 2020. It wasn't necessarily a lump sum.
Okay. And in Captain Ortier's letter, he talks about amortizing the costs. The way I read this, and I guess it's not, there's not that much, there's no detail actually. Did we assume we'd amortize that cost against our ratepayers or against the Navy's?
The Navy is a ratepayer, so that I think what they're proposing is that we, it'd be included in that rate, whatever their chart, their cost is, connection charge would be divided amongst their, their payments to us for that rate.
So when we look at this, are we, I guess it depends on what that amortization schedule is, how much of that we would be financing. But if I went and got a loan for $100,000 to buy a house, the finance charges are figured in there. Can we not include that and we're essentially charging their ratepayers for the cost to connect and build and the finance charge? That's the way it works with any bank.
It's, it's a bit more complicated and I'll do my best to try and answer it. If somebody else cares to jump up and help me out, I'd appreciate it. But the short story is, is in order to finance this, I believe we have to go over a 30-year bond.
Okay.
And the only agreement, the longest agreement we can get with the Navy is 10 years. So how that gets split up? Ah, my rescuers here.
Our finance director, Mr. Doug Marino.
Thank you. There's always a possibility of financing connection fees and the Navy's share of the capital in that project. The issues you run into that make that not a prudent thing to do is you always want to make sure that you match any debt you have on an asset to the estimated life of that. Because the Navy cannot contract out past 10 years, it wouldn't be wise for us to go in finance over a 30-year project, something that we do not know for sure we will get paid for. With the end of that 10 years, they could renegotiate and make it where it's not as financially feasible. The second thing you run into there is...
Can I pause for just a second so I can understand this better? So we can't, we can't determine that amortization schedule of 10 years? Or we can?
You could, you could try to come up with a bonding for 10 years if you negotiated that.
Okay.
But it's going to, it would throw a whole different mix into our financing package there.
Okay.
The second thing you're doing is you're building an asset that's not being used or we're not being paid for. It isn't down to this one issue on whether you can finance their fee or not. There's a dozen other things that all interplane to that as well. They're complicated to talk about in a quick sentence or two, but it just makes it to where the financing of that is not in the city's best interest.
Okay. Thank you. I just want to make sure, you know, we, I believe we've got a very strong relationship with the Navy and I want to make sure we've done everything possible to include them and I, I don't disagree with anything my colleagues have said. When I look at the schedule that you put up there, the Navy is anticipating, or they would have an answer, you said in March of 2015, that's just over a year away. And yet that's a year too long for us. But when I look at those lagoons and you know that it's not viable, it's like, how do we, how do we bring those two together any quicker? And I know we've been trying to do that. So I will support the resolution as well to move forward and hopefully some urgent memos can be flying back and forth. So, sorry, Mayor.
Councilmember Ombra.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll go ahead and make a, a motion to adopt Resolution 14-05.
Second.
Motion from Councilmember Ombra, second from Councilman Muns. Go ahead and adopt and approve Resolution 1405. Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving Resolution 1405 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And that passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Stone. Next up, we'll bring our police chief, Chief Ed Green, up to the podium in reference to a possible ordinance 1683 relating to panhandling. Chief Green.
Mayor, city council members, thank you. So recently, I shouldn't say recently, I guess over the past 12 months, we've seen an increase in panhandling activity in the major arterial roadways around the city of Oak Harbor. I've had several people come to me and talk to me. I've seen several officers talk to me and I've also witnessed these myself where some of these panhandlers have demonstrated a pattern of aggressive behavior, coercive behavior to passersby trying to get money out of them. Panhandlers have all, excuse me, the panhandlers have also taken to entering the roadways approaching vehicles while vehicles are stopped in the roadway. It becomes extremely dangerous. It interferes with my traffic flow and creates potential problems. I had a report and as you read the blog, you'll actually see it in this particular Woodby News article about an individual who has his foot and his leg out in the roadway on a regular basis and it concerns some folks that they may drive over that. They'll tap them windows, they'll call out to the people intimidating them, again, all in an effort to get money. These actions, some of the panhandlers, come close to committing crimes such as robbery and disorderly conduct, but these folks are careful not to cross those lines. They're very experienced, they know what they're doing. They're not going to get over those lines because those are very serious felonies, especially when it comes to robbery. We are looking to draft, or we drafted this ordinance and designed it to give the officers a tool to contact these folks and assist them in changing their behavior. The idea behind this ordinance is not so much to outlaw panhandling. I can't do that. It's a constitutional right. What we're looking to do is to give the officers a tool, something to work with, to speak with these folks and try to direct their behavior and point out this is not acceptable. We're not going to allow this type of behavior here. It's dangerous to yourself, it's interfering with the traffic flow, et cetera, so on and so forth. So we're asking that this ordinance essentially be passed or approved tonight addressing this aggressive panhandling pedestrian interference to do just that. Also on this, you'll notice that there is a fiscal impact. One of the things we have done is I have approached the city of Marysville and Arlington, which have been in the news lately. You'll see it attached to the back of this panthered paperwork here. And they erected signs that essentially talks about, you know, donating the money from panhandling to local charities. In other words, keep the change, don't support panhandling. We're not looking to flood the city with these signs. I do believe that there is this thing called, you know, sign pollution. I don't want to do that. This is a very attractive city. I enjoy being here. I love being here. I love the views here, everything else. These signs would be erected in areas that are selected and chosen between my public works department, my community service officers and a few other folks involved and they'd only go to those select areas to try and keep the public moving and not stopping in roadways such as the intersections of SR 20 and Barrington where I already have traffic issues and accidents. I need traffic moving to that intersection. I don't need it stopping to give out a few pennies for the change to cause a $2,000 or $3,000 or $5,000 accident with injuries. So, so I'd ask the council, look at this and approve ordinance 1683 addressing aggressive panhandling and pedestrian interference.
Thank you, Chief Green. This time, we'll turn to the public. Anyone wishing to comment in reference to possible passage of this ordinance can do so now. Seeing none, we'll bring up our police chief and turn to the city council once again, starting with Councilmember Sevedius.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things. I mentioned the, I don't know if that's the final proof, but can we invert that hand? Still, maybe it's just me, but anatomically, I don't see any way that a human hand can make that shape.
We have a very good public works department. Before I even got a chance to invert that hand, I actually have a dozen of them printed. I can assure you with the next run, we'll probably change that.
Okay. Now, on a more serious note, page two of three, the definition of coerce or coercive, number, letter F. To make any false or misleading representation in the course of making a solicitation. If you read articles, some of the stuff that's printed on the Woodby News Times, there's a lot of chatter on Facebook over this as well, about folks that, you know, I'm homeless, whatever, cancer survivor, veteran, you know, they've, they've got the sign. Homeless is the big one. And they're not homeless or people say they're not. Is that actually then when that would constitute coercion and could result in a misdemeanor if that's the case?
I think this is a judgment call on the officer's part. I think they would judge on the side of caution here and probably not enforce that at this point. It, we're going to need to be able to prove essentially that they're coercing these people, they're, they're pushing their will onto somebody to try and get something in return. If they're not doing that and they're just making these statements, then no, essentially, let's talk about your behavior, what you're doing and maybe we can do it a better way. So.
That was just feedback I, I had received about people that know folks that either travel off island, onto island, have homes, have a pretty decent standard of living and that's not the case with everyone, but they'll hold up a sign which in this interpretation is false and misleading, so.
And I don't doubt that happens and I also don't doubt that there are folks that are in desperate need.
Absolutely.
And that, this kind of gives us that tool to intervene and interact with those folks and maybe get those folks who need that help into those social services.
Thank you. No further questions, Mayor.
Councilman Muns.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, I believe about four or five months ago, there was a mother in here who, for whatever reason, dropped off her child near Safeway at that bus stop as she was going to work and witnessed a panhandler hustling her daughter. And I don't know how old she was, but I don't think she was high school age. And so she started calling around and found out the police department didn't think that they, thought that they were on public property. And so she kept calling and got the owners or the corporation of that strip mall there and found out indeed they were on private property. I know that I have had some people say that if they see the panhandler on the backside of Walmart, then they'll turn around because it frightens them. They don't know if they're going to jump out in front of their car or whatever, or if they're going to Safeway, then they go around the block and go in another entrance. So is there a way to find out where the panhandlers are standing, if that's truly private or public area?
There is and we can do that working with our development services department. And with this tool, essentially that gives us that nexus, that reason to go find out all that information and start working with those businesses to inform them. We can enforce it up to this point, but beyond here, it's, it's going to be your responsibility and give them some options.
Follow-up question. I would imagine that your community officer, I never can pronounce Jennifer's last name.
Izzy Gary.
Izzy Gary. I just, anyway. Either a little piece of paper or something. I mean, we do have some very fine agencies here in town that could help them if they really would like help to offer for them. Help House is on a bus line. I mean, you know, there's, there's other areas to get help here in town. Maybe they know, maybe they don't and maybe they're choosing not to, but if that's not too much trouble, maybe I'm just off... But if that's not too much trouble, maybe I'm just offering a suggestion. Don't mean to cause more work for your officers, but that's kind of a way to reach out also.
And you're thinking exactly the same way we are because it's one of the things, again, with this, it gives us that opportunity legally to approach these folks and kind of say, okay, not doing it correctly. This is what you can do, hire your local, here's the social groups here locally that can help you if you need it.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilwoman Campbell.
Thank you, Mayor. I have nothing to add to the conversation. I support this 100%. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Broton, Pagan.
I don't have anything, Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I support these ordinance.
Councilman Armbrugge.
Thank you, Mayor. I also support this and I would encourage our citizens to give to the local charities because you can affect the market by just basically putting them out of business if the community doesn't hand out money. Now, I have a safety question here for you. Has the police department experienced any traffic safety issues that are left turn eastbound and right turn westbound on Barrington turning into Safeway? There's, it gets backed up there. The, the stacking of vehicles at peak times in that left turn lane going on to SR 20 backs all the way up to there. And I've seen people get pretty jammed up right there when, particularly when somebody stops to talk to somebody panhandling there.
We have seen some issues there. We have had some accidents there without a doubt. I can't say it's related to this particular instance and the panhandlers. I think that's more just the volume of traffic that's going through there. I do recall speaking with development services some time back. We talked a little bit about Barrington right there and some of the improvements that may need to be done in the future to handle the volume that's going up and down there. So, but yeah, that, that does exist and that's part of my concern here is if these folks are in that particular area, loitering around and stepping out into traffic and different things, it's adding to that problem that already exists.
Will you be putting one of these signs in that location, do you know?
I believe that's one of the areas they're targeting, yes.
And then the other area that I've seen, we have really a nice card show at entrance to Walmart, and it's actually pretty entertaining. A fellow who has the signs that flashes and waves and all that, but that's also a left turn movement right there with a fair amount of traffic coming down Barrington, people going into Walmart. Will that be another area that you will target?
Yes.
Okay. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Councilman Eisen.
Thank you, Mayor. I agree that trying to escape from the Safeway parking lot via Barrington is a nightmare in the best of circumstances. So anything we can do to discourage interference is fine by me. And I would like to thank you for the sign. I don't, you said you found it and borrowed it from Marysville? They had the keep the change sign?
I believe it started with Arlington, went to Marysville, and both chiefs and councils there had absolutely no opposition to us using it.
Okay.
So there were no copyright infringements or anything.
That's fantastic. I've never seen anything like it, but I love it so much. It's, it's really incredible what our help house can do with $5. I mean, if you are going to give out that $5, bless you for doing so. If you give it to the help house, they can stretch it so far and feed an entire family. And, you know, if someone is, is in a circumstance where they are put out on the street and have no one to call and nowhere to go, you know, then the Red Cross can step in. We have local resources, like my colleagues were saying, where people can go. So those with spare change who want to donate it really have so many, so many options that they can, you know, give that change away and, and feel good about their decision to do so. And so I love that we have that reminder there for people to think about. So thank you for digging that up. That's just great. And with that, I move that we approve ordinance 1683.
Second. Got a motion from Councilman Eisen, the second from Councilwoman Sevietas to go ahead and adopt ordinance 1683. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting ordinance 1683 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And that passes unanimously.
Mayor, Council, thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Next up, under public hearings and public meetings, we have our Resolution 1404. And we're going to see our senior planner, Mr. Kat Kamak, regarding amending our six-year transportation improvement plan.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, members of the city council. This agenda bill presents an amendment to the six-year transportation improvement plan to include the waterfront trail improvements. The waterfront trail improvement project is primarily envisioned to repair and improve the VFW park where we had a landslide last year and, and improve it back and make it safe. The project also is envisioned to have some kiosks placed along the waterfront trail. This kind of stems from the Windjammer Park, that envisioned kiosks at City Beach Street and by the RV Park where we have a lot of visitors coming so that they can find out information about the city and the resources available. The Marina also gets a lot of visitors that come from out of town and could use information that, you know, where city resources are and that could use a kiosk as well. So the waterfront trail improvements is envisioned to kind of capture all of these, these improvements. So the reason for having this project in the, in the transportation improvement plan is primarily to use federal dollars. So federal dollars comes through the state, comes through the regional transportation organization and is then through a competitive process, grant program of sorts, is dispersed to the communities that can use it. One of the funding sources that is administered by the RTPO is called the Transportation Alternative Program, TAP funds, and it's a grant program that's primarily focused for the, that doesn't focus on the automobile and the street projects. And so that would include all the trails, scenic overlooks and kiosks and so on. And so this project kind of fits from a criteria standpoint to be able to compete well for this grant source. So the six-year transportation plan, improvement plan is formed by projects that comes from the various city plans. And the transportation plan is the primary source where we have all our street projects, but it can also take trail projects from other plans. So the waterfront trail improvements is, is in our transportation plan, it's also in our park plan, and it's also in our comprehensive plan. So this is not a random project. It is coming through our planning process and, and we're just, just finding a way to fund these improvements and grant money is, is free money this year, actually, or for the next four years. This particular program is not asking for a match. So we do not have to have funds in our budget in order to, to try and compete for this. So it's a good amendment to have, it's a good project to have in the six-year tip and therefore that's why the city council is asked to consider this amendment. So I would recommend that the city council hold a hearing, take public comment on it and, and approve the resolution.
Thank you.
If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
At this time, we'll go ahead and conduct that public hearing. Anyone wishing to publicly comment and weigh in regarding the possible adoption of Resolution 1404 and the transportation improvement plan can do so now. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close that public hearing. Turn to the council, starting with Councilman Eisen.
Thank you, Mayor. I think this is great. Anything that we can do to spruce up the waterfront trail and add signage and, and whatever is just fantastic. So if we can procure grant funds, then I'm all for it. Thanks.
Councilman Armbrugge.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be supporting this. Thank you.
Mayor Broton, Pagan.
I support your resolution, too.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Campbell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The kiosk down on Pioneer, is that part of, part of this plan? VFW Park, Pioneer, Marina, the Marina is specifically called an informational kiosk and all that kind of stuff?
Absolutely. I mean, if we have room for kiosks, now, just because the kiosks are along the trail, you can qualify for the Transportation Alternative Program.
But I'm not qualifying for money, I'm talking about plan on where you're going to put them.
Oh, the kiosks?
Yeah.
So Marina, VFW Park, at the end of City Beach Street.
Okay.
By the RV Park. And hopefully, if we have more, if we get more money, Flintstone Park.
Okay. I would like to take a little time here and thank Mr. Ron Hancock. Mr. Hancock has been espousing this very thing since I've been here for nine years now, and he has been espousing this project since before I got on the city council. I'm very, very glad that we are finally doing something. Thank you very much.
Councilman Muns.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank staff for discovering that we can add this to our program to be able to qualify for the funds. So someone has been up and reading, doing a lot of reading to catch this. So thank the staff for finding that. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilwoman Sevietas.
I too would just echo my thanks to you and staff, whoever discovered or created, had that awareness to get it on a couple more or to open up some other funding sources. So with that, I move to adopt Resolution Number 14-04.
Second.
Okay. We got a motion from Councilwoman Sevietas, second by Councilman Muns to go ahead and adopt the Resolution 14-04. Any further discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting Resolution 14-04 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And that passes. Thank you, Mr. Kamak. We appreciate that. Next up, city council will be going into an executive session to discuss pending litigation. I see it's top of the hour. Right now, it's 7:00. Staff has informed me that we're anticipating needing 90 minutes. So for the next 90 minutes, city council will be in executive session discussing pending Okay, at this time, we'll go ahead and reconvene this regular meeting of the Oak Harbor City Council and bring it back into order. When we last left you two hours ago, council went into executive session to discuss pending litigation. Like every executive session, the city council does not take any action in executive session. But at this time, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Councilman Eisen.
So moved.
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adjourned signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye.